Inland Wetlands. Okay, thank you, Stuart, Dan, or whoever did that. Yes. Good evening, everyone. Sorry about the technical difficulties. So it is now seven twenty-three P M. I am calling to order the special meeting of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency on for October twenty-fourth. And I'll have a roll call of members present. I'll begin. Mark Parker.
Bill Rowinsky.
Marla Butts.
Marla Butts.
Stuart Peaslee.
And Stuart Peaslee. And Stuart, we will seat you as you are still, are you still alternate status?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so Stuart is one of our alternate members, and so we will, since we need to have a quorum, we will seat Stuart for tonight's meeting. So, thank you. So tonight's agenda, we've now called to order, we've had the roll call. We've appointed alternates. Now, action on minutes of the previous meeting. So in the package posted on the Wetlands website, you have the special Wednesday, September seventh special meeting. Any corrections, comments, questions?
Bill Rowinsky just comments is that, since we are the Wetlands Agency, it's mentioned as commissioner commissioners in several spots. And should probably not use that wording in the future because it's, it's not not equal to what we are, what we call ourselves as an agency.
Right. So we should, we should say Wetlands Agency members?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
And the Wetlands Agency.
Right.
Other than that, it's generally okay. I didn't see any glaring mistakes. So I will make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Before I second that motion, this is a September seventh special meeting from Wednesday, September seventh?
Yes.
Okay, I do have a question. I'll second Bill's motion. But under discussion, I would like to go to act item four. A subparagraph I, it said item seven A, and I wondered if that should read item eight. I'm not sure from the agenda. I didn't see anything else. So item eight would have been citizens' comments. Seven A would have been the appointment of Dan Malo. You have to look at the old agenda for September seventh. I think it should have.
Yeah, that appears to be the case.
So I think it probably should have.
Wait a minute, so item four A is the action that we took on the minutes of the July eleventh meeting?
Ah, okay, never mind. Yeah, because that's referencing the July meeting.
Correct.
Never mind.
Very good. Good discussion, good clarification. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so moved. Okay. So we'll close that window, and now we will go to pending applications, application zero eight dash two-two dash zero-two Woodstock Inn Associates L P. Map block unit sixty-three ninety-one seventy dash oh-two ninety-four Plain Hill Road subdivision and construction of two single-family homes outside of the Upland Review area withdrawn October seventh. Okay?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
For Dan might know, what is the reason that they were allowed to hook up to the septic? The top, the sewer system?
This was mentioned at last Thursday's planning and zoning meeting that the original tie-in approval was for the inn itself only and not any additional subdivided lots off of that. So I think they only have approval to tie in with the inn.
All right, because there's the Water Pollution Control Authority, I believe, who denied it. So I don't know if they're going to try to reapply or redesign.
Yeah, I don't have much information. Information at that Thursday meeting for planning and zoning is also very limited. They didn't have a denial letter. They just voted on it as a commission to deny it.
All right, well, we'll let them figure it out then at this point.
Bill, I believe the app, a person representing the applicant at planning and zoning said that they're going to redesign with septics. And come back out there. They have septic plans.
Okay, yeah, I thought I heard some, saw something about that also. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So under item Roman numeral four, six, we have new applications. And we have application zero nine dash two-two dash zero-six. A declaratory ruling, Ross and Kathleen Ellison at one-twenty-three Laurel Hill Drive. Remove and replace stone wall at beach and stairs along the lake. So. So Dan, you made a declaratory ruling on that?
I bumped this to the commission.
Oh, okay.
So Mark, I took a look at the plans before the last meeting, and this would not actually classify normally as declaratory ruling for maintenance enjoyment of residential home. But it could get an individual permit. Sign off from the, on page four of the posted Zoom document for this, it shows pictures of what exists there now. And then they show on page five what they would like it to look like. A sample of what it would look like when it's finished. So because there's actually work right up to the water's edge for this, because they're removing the retaining wall, which is at the water's edge. It actually requires a permit. Since they did submit it, I believe it was back in July. This would actually be an individual permit for this. Not a declaratory ruling.
Okay.
I mean, we could do it as declared to a ruling, but we haven't done that in the past for things like this. Particularly since they've been waiting so long. Um, Dan, has the fee been paid for it? As a permit? I don't see it on the, on the form.
No, we have, we haven't submitted a fee. No one, we're waiting to find out what the fee should be.
Okay. All right. So, um, I don't know how anybody else feels, but I, I've looked it over and I don't see any problem with it. And the lake is coming down now. And they need to do it while the lake is down. The lake will be down for a couple of months. So, um, do you have the permission from the Lake Association to do this work on the water's edge?
Yes.
Have you cleared it through them?
Yep.
Okay. And did they give you anything in writing on that?
Um, no, Ross and I are both on the board. So we just had, at the time, it was on Bill Wagner Lakes and Beaches came overlooked at and said he didn't have an issue with it.
Okay, fine, fine. I don't have any problem approving this as an individual permit, providing they, they pay the fee so the town doesn't get stuck with a cost of legal notice.
What's the fee?
Uh, Dan, do you have any idea what the fee is? Is it like about ninety-five?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I haven't been in the office this week.
My guess, it's about ninety-five dollars. That's what I've seen in the past. It's going to be in that range.
Okay.
Somewhere in that amount.
I can drop a check off to Dan if that works.
Because how they, how they pay for the fees in town hall is Dan doesn't take the money. They have you go to the, Dan writes down what the fee cost is. And then that goes to the tax collector. You pay it at the tax collector and return it as being paid.
Oh, okay.
And so that bottom of the first page.
Yep.
I believe is where they put in.
Okay.
See where it says to be filled out by the agency.
Yep, yep.
Date filed, application number and fee. Dan will fill in the fee. And then what the tax collector will do, they will stamp that and say it's been paid. And as soon as Dan gets that, then it could be, it can be signed off as a permit. I don't, I don't see any reason to hold, hold them up. So I would move that application oh-nine dash two-two dash oh-six. Be authorized as an individual permit for Ross and Kathleen Ellison. One-twenty-three Laurel Hill Drive to remove and replace a stone wall at a beach and stairs along the lake. Providing that such approval does not occur until the requisite fee is paid.
Second by Bill Rowinsky.
Motion's been made by Marla Butts, seconded by Bill Rowinsky to approve or, yeah, to
Issue a permit.
Issue a permit for this application. And that work not continue until the fee is paid.
That no permit be issued until the fee is paid.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, any further discussion?
No, just for note, they have a description of the work in the proposal and contract, which is page two. It appeared to be intending to do due diligence with erosion prevention.
Mm-hmm, yep.
That was a good description, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
I found that helpful.
Thanks.
You want to be on the commission?
I'm on the lakeboard. I have enough going on.
No. We had to ask. We're trying to get more members here.
Maybe in the future, I'll be happy to think about it.
Very good. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, so moved. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay. Roman numeral six, letter B. Application zero nine dash two-two dash zero-seven declaratory ruling. Burton Hanson at twelve Beaver Dam Road, new septic system to replace a failing cesspool. Uh, okay, let me.
We, we can't wait.
We can't wait.
We're, we're excited.
Okay, that was application twenty-two oh-seven, right? Oops. Wanted to open that in a different tab. Open in browser.
So I have a question for, for you, Jeff. I see on page. There it is, the cross-section that you show on page ten of eleven of the Zoom documents we have. It looks like, perhaps you could explain to me why the health department's requiring you to bring all that fill-in, remove the two retaining walls and have a slope that's two to one next to the lake.
Sure, thank you, Marla. The, when the soil testing was originally done on the site in advance of skips being hired, the, the inspector for the Health District was concerned with the stone walls remaining, and they're, they're not very high stone walls. They're essentially rows of individual stones to create a subtle terrace on that part of the yard. But in general, health departments are concerned with stone walls remaining imme- immediately down slope of a septic system for fear that some constructed stone walls can act as drains and cause short-circuiting of sewage effluent when they're too close to a septic system. So they, they stipulated, they, the Health District stipulated that any, any of the stone retaining walls be removed within twenty-five feet of the, of the leaching system. So the angle of repose at two to one, we, we would like to soften that, but because we have to extend fill out ten feet beyond the leaching system and basically follow the existing contour with the slope of the, the higher fill. It causes a pretty steep slope. What we would like to do and what the owners of the property would like to do is kind of maintain or even shift the location of that lowest row of stones to kind of create a little bit of a, a stepped retaining wall so that it still maintains a nice aesthetic and keeps that terrace that they're now using as a picnic area intact. We believe that our grading is going to come to an end right about at that current stone wall that's maybe one or two stacked stones. But that's the reason we have to bring on that much fill to retain the high amount of, you know, up to almost three feet of sand that we need in the immediate area of the leaching trench. And then try to blend it down as softly as possible.
So how far is that second stone wall, the one closest to the lake? How far is it from the lake itself?
It's not, I don't have a specific scale on it, but it's approximately twenty-five feet where the, where the fill would end and blend in with the natural grade. It's right around twenty-five feet, twenty-five feet from the leaching field and the lake. The lake shore is kind of meandering there. It gets out further, a little, a little bit more than fifty feet from our leaching system. But it's going to be a minimum of fifty.
So they understand that when you get to two to one, they're not going to be able to mow it. That's two to one is, is too steep to mow. Three to one is usually the maximum slope for mowed. So they're probably going to have to do landscaping or something on that. Or they're going to have to get a good weed whacker because it's, 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 it's not, they're not going to be able to mow it with a mower. If it's two to one.
Just as a point of reference, up slope of the proposed leaching system, there's a fairly steep slope on the downhill side of the, the short driveway. And there's some pachycephalosaurus or some other pretty robust ground cover there. They may need to introduce that on that slope or stack up a stone wall a little higher.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're, this is Bert Hanson, one of the property owners. I mean, we're happy to do whatever landscaping, whatever is needed. We have a weed whacker. So.
I just wanted you to be aware that if, if, I have no objection to this application. Because it's, it's far enough back from the lake, but I just wanted you to understand that it's going to be difficult to mow on a two to one slope.
Yeah.
And so that.
We know, yeah. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
And the Wetlands Commission doesn't really regulate landscape plantings, that kind of thing. So you're pretty well open as to how you handle that, as long as it's not erosive. As long as it doesn't, you know, wash down into the lake. So the erosion control on the downslope side of that lakeward stone wall will be important to protect the lake from any siltation.
Okay.
I presume you've got lawn between there and the lake, correct?
Yes, we do, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so that'll help to filter out anything that does also come out too. So. Mark, I think this is a Wetlands Agent Approval Application. There's no work in Wetlands. And I think it can just be issued by Dan. It's, well, the other thing is, is it could be construed as maintenance and enjoyment of residential home as a declaratory ruling. Because it is a septic system repair. I assume the current one is a cesspool. Yes, Jeff?
Yes, it is. Yes, that's correct.
So it doesn't meet code at all. So this could class as a declaratory ruling for maintenance and enjoyment of a residential home. It's only in the Upland Review area, and it, it is associated with that. And there's no fee involved in that because there's no legal notice published for that. Do you need a motion on that? Does there anybody else have any other opinion?
I'm okay with that, Bill Rowinsky.
Okay, then I move that application oh-nine dash two-two dash oh-seven by Bert Hanson. It's set at twelve Beaver Dam Road to install a new septic system to replace the failing septic cesspool. Be allowed as a use permitted as of right for maintenance and enjoyment of a residential home.
Second by Bill Rowinsky.
Motion's been made by Marla Butts, seconded by Bill Rowinsky. To, uh, so are we going to make this for declaratory ruling or are we just going to?
Declaratory ruling is what I said.
Yep, yep.
And we have to do that. Dan can't do that.
Okay, yep.
So we have to prove it as a declaratory ruling.
Okay. So to be approved as a declaratory ruling. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, abstained, so moved.
Thank you all very much.
All right.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Federation.
Welcome. Thank you. All right, moving on to Roman numeral number six, letter C. Application zero nine dash two-two dash zero-eight declaratory ruling Baxter Road drainage easement and additional road improvements. All right, let me open up that document. Where is it? Zero eight, okay, yep.
Art?
Yeah.
That's Phil Mahoney.
Go ahead, Phil.
Okay, this is for the Closet Lake District to do a, a drainage. We have an easement across the Graves property to take care of all the water coming down around the turnaround, and we're going to be putting catch basins in and starting with a plunge pool at the lake. Uh, then we're going to be doing catch basins, and the first phase will probably, would just be doing the first two catch basins. But we, we want to get the plunge pool in that, you know, first. And it's all been engineered by K W P. Do you have those prints? I, I dropped the prints off to Dan.
Yes, they are in, they're, they're scanned in. So how does the water get to the lake now?
Um, it, it kind of, well, we, we do have some drainage up above, but it's, it's shooting it into the center of the green area, and then it's flowing overland. And then it comes over the road when it's, when it's too heavy. When a little bit of rain, it kind of handles it, but with the rain we've been having in the last few years, um, there's just sheets of water that come across the road. And sometimes it's during the winter time, like when it freezes, warms up during the day a little bit, the water comes out of the ground and it sheets right across the road. Uh, but these heavy storms that we're getting, one, two, three inches, the, the drains just can't control it, and it's picking up all the gravel and everything upstream from it or upland from it. And as it's rolling down, it's digging erosion trenches where it's going across the road and taking more gravel out. So we're planning on doing four-foot deep sumps like we did on, we did a project like five or six years ago on Shore Drive, but we, we put four-foot deep sumps in uh, which we have drained out by the local company and, um, we, we've been working on this for two years, trying to get this ready because the, the owner had bought the, the, the second property on the right-hand side. And he and his brother had the name on a deed, but his brother passed away, and then we had to go through probate, and we had to go through pandemic, and it's just been a nightmare. So we're finally coming to the Wetlands because we, we knew we had to do it. We wanted to have a plan in hand when we came.
So is, is this a new discharge point, or is this kind of like where the water ultimately went to?
Well, it actually goes right underneath the house. It's over here on the right-hand side, and in between Dennis Sherman's house and the Graves' house, they've got a little, a little swale that they made that was good for the load, but anything beyond a, a little bit of rain winds up overflowing his little drain, and it, it just cheats over his, the whole property and goes underneath the house. And he had, he had just purchased, he recently purchased that house, and his family has been on the other property since like nineteen fifty-five, and we had taken down the house that was there with the agreement that, well, we would take the old house down, which all fit into one dumpster. We did have a demolition permit for that. We, we did take the, the building down, and now we, we've got everything signed and.
So actually, you haven't really changed anything. It, it was maybe the slight location where the discharge point, one of the discharge points might be.
Yeah, we're only, we're moving it like twenty feet back over to the side of his property and away from his septic system and where it is, it's not near any septic system, and it's the lowest plate, place on the lake.
So, Mark, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that maybe this might qualify as a non-regulated use under conservation of soil and water. Only because of the safety issues for it, and I, I don't, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't issue an authorization since the water already goes to the lake, although it's slightly different path. And it has been designed by a professional engineer. So, and it's affecting the Lake Association's property, and the Lake Association is the one that's doing the work. So I'm thinking that rather than processing through with a permit fee, that it could be, and because there's, they're not modifying the natural indigenous character of the wetland or water course, that it would classify as a non-regulated use under conservation of soil and water. I would like to know if anybody else has the same opinion.
Bill Rowinsky, I would agree with that.
Yep.
Okay, then I would move that application oh-nine dash twenty-two dash oh-eight. Baxter Road Drainage Easement and Additional Road Improvements be allowed, be authorized as a non-regulated use under under conservation of soil and water.
Second by Bill Rowinsky.
Motion's been made by Marla Butts, seconded by Bill Rowinsky to approve, approve as is this going to be a declaratory ruling as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
declaratory ruling that it be authorized as a non-regulated use under conservation of, of soil and soil and whatever.
Yeah, water.
Water, yep.
I, I have two questions. One is, can you people see my video or can, or just my audio?
I only see your audio. Yeah, there's no video.
Yeah, okay. I, I have a camera here, and it was working the other day, but the, the other, the other topic I was going to bring up is we had, we had had a permit five years ago for doing maintenance of the other right-of-ways, like on Shore Drive and the public beach and a boat launch. We had gotten like a blanket permit like fifteen or twenty years ago, and the last time we got a, a regular permit to maintain the right-of-ways to take care of weeds and things like that. Would this be covered under that because we have additional road work?
Um, it depends on what that other road work is. I can, I can tell you from the plans that we have. What's here is that, that there is no change. There's no change to the water body, really. There's so you haven't changed the natural indigenous character of that. So you haven't changed the natural indigenous character of that water course.
No, we wouldn't.
But I don't know what your other thing. Yeah, I don't know what your other activities are, so maybe if you, what you want to do is come through and ask. Um, specifically for a a a non-regulated use as as of. Under conservation of soil and water, but detail what the activities are.
Okay.
So that we know what we would be giving you a a kind of like a carte blanche for for the maintenance.
Okay.
And unless you have that paperwork um, that you can put supply to Dan to give, you know, that we can look at. You'll have to draft something up, so we know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, okay, I'm happy with just erosion um, on Baxter Road, you know. Or I'm happy with the the plan, so.
Any further questions? Discussion? Alright, all those in favor, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Okay, moving on to Roman numeral number six, uh, letter D as in David. Uh, application zero nine dash twenty-two dash zero two Timber Harvest Joshua and Sharice Kearney. Matt Block Unit, uh, number five, seven, zero, nine, dash, zero, two, dash, thirty-one, Polbridge Road. We have any? Comments by the applicants, yep. Anyone here for representing the uh? The Kearneys? Okay, um.
So Mr. Harmon's not here. He probably doesn't know about the. Doesn't. Who's Chris? Chris's phone.
I'm Chris.
That's for the next two.
Alright, okay, so, um. I was looking, uh, we should just take a look at it. I don't see, other than just cutting, they're not doing any crossing with. Temporary drainage crossings, they're not. They're just removing some trees and skidding them out. Where's the yarding area? I don't see the yarding area. Oh, I see it, never mind. It's by the house. Off of Paul Bridge.
Well, one of the items checked off was removal of trees and wetlands.
Yep. But under the harvest objective, it says removal of of the most mature softwood. Timber trees, white pine and hemlock, open forest canopy. To establish and facilitate natural revegetation. Try shifting to hardwood dominant stand type. Open sightline for sunset viewing and then. Timber harvest treatment is selective harvest with group selection, so there, there might be some. Clear cutting. In selected areas. But he doesn't show where those selected areas are, I don't think. Whether they're in wetlands or not. But still, it's it's, it would be, it would be construed under, since there are no crossings, no roads that we have to worry about. Um, there is not going to be any filling in the wetlands, it's just cutting of the trees and. Trees can regrow after time, so that's not. A a permanent, maybe a long-term change, but it's not a permanent change. So I I think it does qualify as a timber harvest as shown. So I move to approve application. Oh nine dash two two dash oh two Timber Harvest for Joshua and. Sharice Kearney, Matt Block Lot. Uh, unit fifty-seven oh nine dash oh two dash thirty-one on Polbridge Road. As a use permitted as a right under agriculture.
Second by Bill Ruwinski.
Motion's been made by Marla Butts, seconded by Bill Ruwinski uh, to approve uh. The request for uh, timber harvest as a use permitted as a right. Under agriculture. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I. Opposed, abstained, so moved. Alright. Moving on to. Roman numeral six. Letter E. Timber Harvest Permit Number zero nine dash two two dash zero three. Kevin Withers Senior, Matt Block Unit. Number sixty-three ninety-one dash seventy dash thirty-seven and M Matt Block Unit, uh. Lot Unit sixty-three ninety-one seventy dash oh three dash oh one, four twenty-six New Sweden Road. Uh, let me open that one up.
So Mark, when we had to cancel the last meeting due to technical difficulties, I made some calls to applicants and one of them was to. Kevin Whitney Senior and I spoke with him.
Withers.
Told him that as long as there was cutting in the. Non-wetlands areas and he wasn't clear cutting in the upland review areas, that they could start their cutting. Um. But that they, they, until they couldn't really cut in the wetlands or in the upland, do any clear cutting in the upland review area. Until they got some kind of approval from the commission. So I just wanted.
Right.
The other commissioners to know that. That I told them that they could move forward with at least the start of the cutting in the non-wetland areas. And Dan, we only seem to have page one of the Timber Harvester quest form. I don't see the second page. Maybe it's at the end, no. It just got left off. So, I believe the Timber Harvester is online. Chris, you're there? Chris, your, your, your phone is muted. You're you're muted. Okay, now you're okay.
Okay.
So describe what you're gonna do on this one, please, because we don't have the second page.
Um, yeah, we're picking out the um, more mature trees, uh, fourteen inch and up. So. There's no real clear cutting ever gonna be in one spot because there's, you know, smaller trees gonna be left behind.
Yep, Mr. Whitney said to me that there's an old stone bridge.
Yep.
That was gonna be used as access and that he wasn't gonna make any changes to the road. Or or make changes to the bridge. He was just gonna use the existing structure.
Correct.
Um, which apparent, and so you're not proposing any upgradings of the road. Or any changes to that that bridge, that old bridge.
No.
Yeah. I see it on page seven of eight, where the existing stone bridge is identified.
Yep.
I don't see a problem with this application.
Uh, Bill Ruwinski. Uh, Bill Ruwinski, I wanna just clarify with Mark. Um. You have landowner record Kevin Withers Senior. Are there other landowners of that land that are not listed?
Yes, my wife Natalie Parker, so I will be abstaining on, from voting on this application. Kevin and my, and my wife are brother and sister.
That's Kevin Senior?
Yes, Kevin Senior, yep.
Okay. I move to approve application. Oh nine dash two two dash oh three Timber Harvest for Kevin Withers Senior, Matt Block Lot in unit number. Sixty-three ninety-one dash seventy dash thirty-seven. And Matt Block Lot Number Unit sixty-three dash ninety-one dash seventy dash oh three dash one. From four twenty-six New Sweden Road be approved. As a use permitted as of right under agriculture.
Second by Bill Ruwinski.
Motion's been made by Marla Butts, seconded by Bill Ruwinski. To uh, approve the application number uh, zero nine dash twenty-two dash zero three. Um. Given with his senior and Natalie Parker, uh, MBLU number sixty-three ninety-one seventy-nine thirty-seven. As the uh, Timber Harvest use permitted as of right uh, under agriculture. Um. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Stuart?
I, I.
Okay.
I had my microphone turned up, sorry.
Alright, very good. Um. Opposed? Abstained? Uh, the chair abstains. Um. Motion passes. Alright. Moving on, Roman numeral number six. Letter F. Application zero nine dash two two dash zero four Timber Harvest, David and Daniel Withers. Matt Block Unit sixty-three ninety-one dash seventy dash oh six fifteen Swenson Road. Chris? You also have that one, yep.
Yep.
Alright.
Bill Ruwinski, Mark, I have the same question for you on this one, as of landowners of record.
That's the landowners of record for that parcel is David Withers and Daniel Withers, that's it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep, yep. And I will be abstaining on this vote as well.
So Chris, could you describe the harvest? We don't have the second page on this um, request also, so could you describe the work? That you're doing on this property?
Same thing, um, you know, all the trees uh, fourteen inches and up. We're gonna take out.
And there's no stream crossings on this, correct?
There's like a little intermittent stream, but there's access on each side, so I don't really have to cross it. And there's a pasture right there, so when the pasture is frozen, I'm gonna be able to get half there and then there's a section of woods that connects to the the road. So I won't be, you know, I won't have to cross the crossing area at all. I'll be able to get it from each side.
Okay. So there won't be any wetlands involvement, no corduroy road across the stream, that kind of thing.
Correct.
Do you have any other comments, Bill or Stu?
No, I'm fine with that.
Before I move, okay, I'm gonna move to approve application oh nine dash two two dash oh four Timber Harvest on David and Daniel. Withers, Matt Block Lot Unit sixty-three ninety-one dash seventy oh six. Four fifteen Sweden Road. To be approved. As a use permitted as a right under agriculture.
That would be fifteen Swenson Road, S W E N S O N. You said, you said Sweden, yeah.
Sweden, yeah, it's, I should have said, I apologize, it should have been Swenson.
Yep.
I correct myself. You correct me.
Second by Bill Ruwinski.
Motion's been made by Marla Butts, seconded by Bill Ruwinski. Uh, to approve uh, Timber Harvest uh, request for approval, application uh, zero nine dash two two dash zero four. As a use permitted as a right under agriculture, um. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair abstains. And motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Roman numeral number six, letter G. Application zero nine dash two two dash zero five, construction of single family home. James and Kathy Jean Barlow at twenty, at two fifteen Crystal Pond Road. Let me open that one up. Me too.
I don't know about you guys, but it's taken a long time to download. Some of the PDFs from the website.
Which number can we see?
Oh nine twenty-two dash oh five.
Okay. Well, there it is, okay.
What water body is this on?
Crystal Pond.
Crystal, crystal.
Yep, yeah, it's right, sandwich right in midfin Woodstock and Eastford. The old Boy Scout Camp, uh, Camp Nahako is on the south end of the. Of the lake. Which is now co-owned by. The towns of Connecticut and right town, towns of Woodstock and Eastford. Um. Shared open space.
Five-bedroom house.
Okay, so in Exhibit D of the application, it says that the septic system developed will be constructed on a separate parcel, also owned by the Barlow's. And the system will require pumping to the higher elevation. Test holes were excavation, excavated adjacent to the proposed house. Adjacent to Crystal Pond and the septic system was originally going to be constructed there. The alternative was abandoned because access to the proposed home would have required driving over the septic system. And the septic's design and easement to construct on a separate parcel has been approved by the Northeast District Department of Health. Dan, do we have in the file N D D H's approval? Do you know?
Uh, I don't have that in the file, but I can check my email as you guys um. Work on this application.
Okay.
If I may, um, Norm Tebow, Killingley Engineering, I'm here representing the Barlow's this evening. And uh, we do have um. Approval from uh, from the Northeast District Department of Health. We also had to get approval from the state. Uh, and uh, even though Mr. Barlow owns both parcels, um, he did have to essentially grant himself an easement. For the septic system on the separate parcel. Uh, so. Uh, that was rather cumbersome. It 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 took some time to do it, um. And but uh, the the easement uh, is in place, uh, has been filed on the land records. Uh, and um. Ultimately, um, you know, the septic system will be uh, constructed uh, further. From the lake, uh, than the house, obviously, we have to pump up to it. And one of the other issues too with um, uh, we we did look at um. Uh, constructing a driveway. Uh. From uh, his existing property, kind of uh, in in the area where the septic system is proposed, we would have had to snake down the hill. Uh, it really would have required a lot of tree clearing, a lot of grading. Uh, there's ledge there, so uh, inherently it it did present a lot of problems to do it that way. Um, I think it was originally Mr. Barlow's um. Intention uh, to do that, to give himself a dedicated driveway, because right now he's got an easement uh, to get to his property through. A a couple of other properties. Uh, but. Uh, logistically, it 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 just didn't work and uh, you know, and to construct the driveway would have been, you know, quite the uh. Uh, quite the chore uh, to do it just because of the amount of earthwork that would have been involved.
So I see on the plans, which um, is the main sheet that. That the lot that he wants to build the house on is about an acre.
Correct.
And that the house that he wants to put the, uh, that the property he wants to put the septic system easement on is about two acres in size.
That's correct.
Um. Yeah, so. Those deeds are filed on the land records?
Yes, they are.
For the septic system and why did he need State Health Department approval for this?
Uh, because of the septic system being on a separate parcel. Uh, it automatically has, it automatically has to go, uh, to the state for their approval for that.
So why didn't he consider doing a lot line adjustment? And granting himself, cause he owns both parcels, then they wouldn't have needed an easement, he would own it outright. It would be carved out of the two-acre lot.
Well, he wanted to keep that, uh, that other lot, a, a compliant lot. Uh, it's a, it's a two-acre lot, and by, uh, reducing the size of it, he would have made it a, a non-conforming lot. So, uh, in order to keep it conforming, uh, he chose the, uh, the easement option instead.
Well, what's the zone, what's, what's the required minimum lot size for that area?
Well, it's two acre. Two acre minimum lot size, I know that the, the existing one acre lot is, is, uh, is not conforming, but it's an existing lot of record, so. We didn't want to make, essentially, we would have been creating a non-conformity, uh, by doing a boundary line adjustment for that two-acre lot.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Stuart Peaslee here, just out of curiosity, what, what is the pros and cons of the conforming and non-conforming detail?
Well, not a non-conforming lot, once, once you make it, you, you can't create a non-conformity, there are existing non-conformities. But if you have a conforming lot and you change the boundary, uh, you know, by simply looking at it from a, from a zoning perspective. Uh, you, if you create a non-conforming lot, then, uh, it, it would not be developable in the future. Because it didn't, uh, exist in that state or in that condition, uh, prior to the adoption of zoning regulations.
So it would be. Just, uh. Nothing that could have any construction or any building put on it in the future.
Right, not, not without going for a variance, but.
Okay.
But, but a variance, um, you know, in order to get a variance, you know, the two criteria that you really have to look at when going for a variance. And number one, it cannot be self-created, and, and, and I think that's, you know, first and foremost, the issue here. Where if you, if you create a non-conforming lot, then, you know, sorry, you kind of painted yourself into a corner.
Uh-huh, okay, thanks for clarification.
Someone's, Marla's butt's being, so instead of a, an easement for a driveway, he threw that two-acre lot. He decided to do an easement for the septic system. So is he proposing, because we have power outages out in this part of the neck of the state. A lot, is he planning to have a generator to help?
Yes.
If he loses power?
Yes, yeah, he will have a generator.
Okay. And how close is the house? How close is the house to the lake, to the pond?
Um, at, at the, at the closest point. Um, hang on one second, I can, uh, let me just take a quick look at this for you. Uh, approximately. Forty feet at the closest point.
Okay, so he's got some distance, but about the land, the, the area of disturbance, how close is, is the silt fence that you show? Which I assume is the limit of disturbance.
Yeah, it is, um, another thing too, I think it's important to note that this is a previously developed lot. Uh, there is currently a, a cabin on it that's in disrepair, uh, there's a shed and there's a garage. All of those, um, those three items are obviously would be taken off in order to build this house and, and, uh. Two of the three items, the, uh, the shed and the existing cabin are in, are within the footprint of the house. And, uh, the garage is approximately where the, where the driveway turnaround is shown on the plan.
Gotcha.
Uh, so they, I mean, there is, there is some activity, uh, they're gonna be, uh, uh, doing the, the floating dock. Uh, we are proposing here, uh, and they do wanna, uh, create a small beach as well, which will not be in the water. But it'll be right adjacent, uh, to it, obviously.
Yeah, so because they're touching the water with their grading activities, this is gonna have to be an individual permit. It can't be a wetlands agent approval.
No, I, I assumed as such, um, I, I don't think we had any expectation about it being an agent approval.
Dan, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, Dan Mallow, Mallow, I'm looking at the, um, the PDF document. Uh, and I don't see, um, an application number, uh, assigned to it yet, could, uh, but I know that on the agenda. You have it listed as, as application, uh, ninety-nine, yeah, zero-nine dash twenty-two dash oh-five. Um, but anyway. If you would see to it that the proper number gets put on the actual document.
Absolutely.
Yep.
And, um, do, do you have a cop, Norm, do you have a copy of the NDH approval and the state approval?
Yes, I do.
Can you forward that for the office's files?
Yep, I certainly can. I'm kind of surprised that, well, I know there's been a transition period with the wetlands agent and so forth, so.
Yeah, it, it's been a lot of confusion, so, because of stuff that was left undone, so.
Not a problem.
Yeah. So when did this application come in? Uh, looks like it's stamped in September.
Yes, it was stamped in September, um, I think there were. You know, a, a series of, um, either, um, technical difficulties or, or, um. Or non, uh, uh, you know, not having a quorum and things of that nature, so. Um, you know, here we are, uh, at this point, um, I know it was, um. You know, Mister, um. Uh, Mister Barlow isn't in any real hurry to, to get constructing anyway, so.
Um, the reason, yeah, the reason why I was asking is I'm thinking I'd like to have this, I personally would like to have this put off until. Next month's meeting, which is.
Which is.
Beginning of November.
Yeah, the beginning of November.
Couple of weeks.
Hmm.
Uh, and we have the time, we're, we're not at our sixty-five day limit, so. Mark, I, I'd like to have this, um, application, um. How would I gonna say it?
We, we usually receive for consideration, receive for consideration, application, blah, 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 and then, you know. It'll be on the agenda for next month.
Yeah, so it hasn't passed the thirty-five days, so this is actually the date of receipt. Yes?
Hmm.
So that means we can't render, we have. Have to wait thirty days.
We can wait, we see. Yep.
So that means we can't render decision in November's meeting, it'll have to be December's meeting.
Correct.
Just let your client know, Norm.
Yep.
If he's not in a hurry.
No, he, I mean, obviously, I mean, and then, e- even if it were approved next month, then, you know, the, the, the cold weather's kicking in.
Right.
And, uh.
Yep, it's kind of late to get started.
These, yeah, nobody wants to, um, dig holes and pour a foundation in December, well, I guess some people do, but.
So Mark, I move that we table application oh-nine twenty-two dash oh-five, construction of a single-family home. By James and Kathy Jean Barlow at, uh, two fifteen Crystal Pond Road, until next month's meeting. For further review.
Um, okay, just a parliamentary question then, Marla, I mean, so you're just, we, we've already received, by virtue of it being stamped and dated. Then it's automatically been received? I'm just saying, in, okay, so, so in the past, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I, you're correct, I have to probably say we accept it as an application.
We, we, right, we, we receive it as for consideration, application, blah, 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 right, yep.
Right, so I'll, I'll amend my motion to say that application. Oh-nine dash twenty-two dash oh-five, construction of a single-family home, James and Catholic Jean Barlow. Two fifteen Crystal Pond Road, be received for consideration as individual permit application. To be considered further at next month's meeting.
A second.
Motion's been made by Marla Butts, seconded by Stuart Peaslee, uh, to, uh, accept, receive for consideration. Um, application zero-nine dash two-two dash zero-five. Uh, to be considered at next month's, uh, meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so moved. Okay. Moving on, under new applications, Roman numeral six, letter H. Application ten dash twenty-two dash zero-one, construction of single-family home. Leon Properties at two thirty-nine Barlow Cemetery Road. Let me call that one up.
I'm, I'm representing that application as well this evening, Norm Tebow.
Okay, Norm, thank you, yep. Uh, let's see.
So Mark, this one looks like it's a wetlands agent approval, it's got a tiny amount of work in the upland review area. Um, for the septic system construction, and that's about it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Norm.
No, that's what it is, we're about, there's a portion of the septic system that is within about eighty-five feet of, of the wetlands. Uh, but the bulk of the development is outside of the upper review area.
Mark, I move application.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion. I hope you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Uh, that application ten dash twenty-two dash oh-one, construction of a single-family home on Leon Properties. Two thirty-nine Barlow Cemetery Road, be processed as a wetlands agent approval.
Second by Bill Ruinsky.
Motion be, motion made by Marla Butts, seconded by Bill Ruinsky. Uh, to move this application, uh, as a wetlands agent approval. Um, and Dan, make sure we get the, uh, the correct application number printed on this, uh, document as well. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, abstained, so moved.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay. Moving on to Roman numeral number seven. Administrative business, letter A. Twenty twenty-three meeting dates. Okay, so let me go back to the website. And proposed meeting dates. Okay. You know, Wetlands and Water Courses Agency meets every first Monday, except if that day is a holiday, so we're looking. January third, because. Monday, the. Second is, well, the day after January first, but, well. We'll go with Tuesday.
It's, uh, the town hall is closed on the second as, uh, an observation.
Oh, right, okay, got it, yep, that explains that, okay, very good. Uh, February sixth, March sixth.
Um, when is July fourth? Uh, I, is it recognized on the third? Well, that's Monday, the third, you really wanna do it on Monday, the third, the day before the holiday, or do you want a long weekend? In July.
Long weekend.
That's what, that's what I would think too.
So why don't we move that up to July tenth?
That works for me.
Me too.
Hey, Dan or Amy, can you see that that change we made on that document?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And we have the same problem September fourth.
Alright.
And this, yeah.
That, that, that could be the fifth, actually, if you want, or go to the eleventh.
I'd rather go to the week later, that'll give a chance for, for the office to develop the agendas and stuff and not be, you know, rushed. Um. And it'll give applicants a little more time to get applications in. Rather than going to Tuesday. If we could go to the following Monday.
Okay, so, Dan, we'll change that to Tuesday, Sep-, I mean, sorry, Monday, September eleventh. For that month. Alright. So we have two amendments to this document. To, um. Monday, right, Monday, January. Ninth, is that correct? Or, or we're gonna leave that?
I'd go to January ninth, Monday.
Yep, so that will be Monday, January ninth. And then July.
Tenth.
Tenth, Monday, July tenth. And then Monday, September eleventh.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
Now, the only question is, is, will there be a conflict with another, with another, um. If, if we're back out of Zoom, if we're not in Zoom, if we're in person, will there be a problem with rooms?
Well, I have an EDC meeting on second Mondays, EDC meets second Mondays, so that's at six, that's at six o'clock.
Oh.
So if we're zooming, I'll have to zoom home to get on to the, uh. That's, we got, we had one problem and before, I, I was late because of that, but, you know, we. I, we can, we can work it out, I can leave.
Who knows, maybe we'll get another member on board.
There you go.
There you go.
Hey, you never know.
Yep, we need to poke the selectmen again to get some nominations in.
I think they get poked a lot for that. Not the, not the only commission's needing help.
Okay, so, um. You all approve of the changes we made? All those in favor, so you can signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so moved, thank you. So Dan, if you could print that up and then we'll post it on the website. Uh, okay.
Well, actually, he has to file it with the, uh.
That's right.
Clerk.
Yeah, file it with the.
She has to send it to the Secretary of State.
Right. Okay, Roman numeral number seven, administrative business, letter B. Ordinance concerning inland wetlands agency membership. Okay, let's.
So Dan, the one that you posted online is not a redline version. Um, which version is this? Is this what you got from Crystal?
I received from Crystal, uh, two documents that are in, on the, um, meeting documents. One was IA ordinance proposed change, clean copy.
Okay.
And then ordinance update from the Board of Select.
Alright, for the. So for the benefit of the public, if they're gonna go to public hearing, they should be showing the ones with the track changes, uh. You know, with, she should have printed out the one with the track changes, uh, showing. So then the commission, the agency members could see what the changes are that are gonna be proposed. You can't see it in the version, that's the clean copy? And the public's gonna wanna know what the changes are. And so that's why I would. Maybe it's something I need to talk to Crystal about, but I can't tell what, you know, what changes have been made or not made from the, the version that I gave her. And I haven't read this, sorry. Any idea when they plan to go to town meeting on this? Any idea when they plan to go to town meeting on this?
The email respondents from Crystals uh said that they. If if the the agency wants this on the agenda for the town meeting, please let them know because they're starting to consider items and dates for a town meeting. Um, so I think the ball is in the um, the agency's court.
All right. I haven't had a chance to compare the language, so I really don't know if the languages, because there were some changes that were suggested by. Attorney Roberts, and then we made suggestions upon that, above and beyond that, I believe, at the last meeting. So I'm not sure which which version.
Yeah, here's her email.
Yeah, I saw her email, but she didn't, she said it was attached on her email, but it's not attached to the PDF that's on the posted.
Okay.
In the Zoom documents. So I can't tell, you know, what the changes are. From the original. There weren't that many. There were just a couple, you know.
It was it was my recollection that she accepted um, your modifications as presented.
Okay. I don't remember seeing in section two. All terms begin on January first. I don't remember that. Let me see if I've got it here. I don't know if I have it. Now, I have it on a thumb drive. Sorry, it's not on my computer. It looks like the changes we asked for in the last meeting that we had regarding the alternates to serve a three-year term, not a two-year term. Looks like she put that in. That's there. And we also asked her to change. Uh. Enforcement officer to wetlands agent. Throughout. And I'm looking for that. It's in the enforcement section. My says replaced once. I think there were two. There's the second one, okay. As best I can tell, it looks like she's made all the changes. From my memory.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to, you have to go through it word by word if you really want to be sure.
Yeah. Or you have to know where the changes were and go look it up. Yeah, which is what I'm doing. So that's, it looks like they're all there. But if there were other changes made, I wouldn't have known it because I'm not looking for them. Um, but that's okay. I trust Crystal. I don't expect that she would throw something in. All right, so. She's saying it's up, and that was on a, on the fifth. Thirteenth. Do you have any idea when the next town meeting, there's they're planning on it for at all, Dan?
Good.
Are they looking at it within the next month or two months or?
I'm uncertain.
Okay, all right.
Her her email is kind of uncertain too, just it just says they're working on it.
Well, we always have an opportunity if we find something wrong with it is to go to the town meeting and say that we found something wrong with it and ask it to be changed. So. I don't want to hold this up because we've been, we've been relying on Stuart to show up every time, even though he's just an alternate. And I think we should move forward. And ask them to put it on the town meeting. Agenda.
Okay with me.
So Mark, I'm gonna make a motion that Dan notified the Selectmen's Office that the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency of Woodstock. Requests the Board of Selectmen to place the proposed. Ordinance amendments. On the next town meeting agenda.
What's what's actually the difference between an alternate and a regular member?
You don't have to show up. Uh, they're not gonna knock you off if you don't show up. Um. And i- if we have a full complement. Um, you're welcome to sit on the during the deliberations, but you can't vote. But if we, if you're appointed to sit in on a particular meeting, then you have to follow that through that application. Like if we were in a hearing or something like that, you'd have to follow it through somebody who you were sitting in for.
It's a, it's kind of a relaxed version of the.
Yes.
I see.
Yeah, kind of, yeah. So did I finish my motion? Mark? I think I did.
I, yeah, you did, yep.
I second it.
Motion's been made by Myla Butts, seconded by Stuart Peaslee to um. Notify the selectmen that the agency uh would ask them to put it on the uh agenda at the next town meeting. Um, the for the uh, the ordinance uh revisions for wetlands. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I opposed abstained, so moved. So Dan will follow through with getting that into over to Crystal to get it on the agenda. Okay. Administrative business, Roman numeral seven, letter C, subdivision regulations concerning wetlands. Subdivision regulations concerning wetlands. Where is that?
This may be a vestige of a previous agenda. I didn't know if the commission really wanted to pick this up again at the special meeting, but I believe you you left off on it at the last meeting.
You referring to September? July, would had to been July's.
I believe it was in July.
All right, I got the July minutes in front of me. Okay, so in July, it said that the data, data requested at previous meeting has been provided to the commission for reference and review. I don't know what that is. I'll go look at whatever I got mailed. Or we can go look at those Zoom documents before, but I don't remember seeing anything, but I guess we must have.
Which one are you looking at on this, on the minute, you're looking at the minutes?
I'm looking at the July minutes, the ones we approved.
Table, it says table until next meeting. Administrative business C. Uh, was that a I or I, one table and says subdivision regulations concerning wetlands table until next meeting.
And I don't know what that's about, so.
So it's been tabled and sitting in limbo.
That was in a September meeting, right?
I'm looking at uh. June seventh, sorry.
Says, not at this time. Subdivision regulations concerning wetlands, not at this time. And then there was, that was in September. And in July, it said data requested at previous meeting has been provided to the commission for reference and review, which means I have to go back to June.
I I just looked at, I just looked at June and it said table until next meeting.
I have no idea what they're talking about, but.
Uh, the, it it was the same same administrative business topic, number seven, and it said uh. Subdivision regulations will be tabled until next meeting.
Well, until we know what it's about.
I think that you guys just, Marla, I'm sorry, I think that you guys just wanted to review and see if there were any updates. It was a general administrative thing and you guys just kept pushing it forward. Um, I think the data requested was just the current subdivision regulations that had wetlands in it. It wasn't a specific topic. I think it was a general overview to make sure it was correct.
Okay, so those regulations should be posted online already, correct?
Yeah.
The planning and zoning subdivision regulations should be.
Yes, I think I actually just forwarded them to you so you'd all have them an email, didn't have to hunt for them. I don't think it was anything specific at all.
Okay, all right. So so we have to do a little homework. We have to do a little homework first before we talk about anything, so. I guess maybe what we should do is just look at it ourselves, and if we have some concerns about what's in there that we contact Dan and. And ask him to place it on the agenda for next month's meeting, otherwise let's drop the issue.
Yeah.
You don't need a motion for that, do you, Mark?
No. Okay.
If we could put that as a reminder. For us to do that as our homework.
So you want it on the agenda anyways?
I will forget it otherwise.
I'll tell you what, Stewie, I will send you a text message to remind you.
Sounds like a.
On your phone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah. All right, moving on to Roman numeral number eight, citizens comments. I see the Ellisans are hanging in there, so what do you guys got for us tonight?
I'm doing the roads for Lake Bungee and I need some direction from the from the board. We have a two, two uh topics that I need help with. I believe what the um Quocet Lake Roads person was asking for is exactly what I needed to hear and the direction to take, because we have. Multiple spots, but two that I'm concerned with that are just like theirs, where there's no real drainage setup, but it's going across the properties. Uh, and into the lake, so we would need to get an engineer to draw something up and then you folks would probably do something similar that you just did with those. Folks, so that was one of them, and I pretty much got it from that conversation. Thank you. And the other one is, a lot of our places where our catch basins dump out into the lake, we're getting a lot of sediment. And we wanted to know how we would go about cleaning that up as the lakes drawn down, what kind of permits, or if any, I have no idea. I'm looking for direction. That would be at the water edge, or it it's in the water now. When the water drains down, you can see there was like, you know, five yards of of gravel from uh. You know, from the catch basins, especially during the last couple of years with the excessive rain.
A question for you. Do your catch basins have sumps?
Yes, they do.
How often do they get clean?
Once a year, we actually have it in the budget to do it twice a year now because of this problem. I don't know if we're gonna get a contractor to come out twice a year. It's pretty difficult to get some help sometimes, but um, that that was kind of one of the plans to keep this from happening.
Yeah, so what I'm thinking is, you might want to consider having some kind of forbay. Uh, in the lake itself, uh, some kind of little structure, semi-circular. To control the migration of sediment as it comes out. To kind of slow the water down right close to the entrance, so it doesn't migrate farther out into the lake. So that when you do draw the lake down, you have a clear space where you're gonna be cleaning it out so that it. And that would be something that an engineer would design. Uh, to give you long-term act, you know, you want to have something that's long-term that you can make use and maintain.
So you would put like a footing into the lake, is that what you're picturing with some sort of wallish thing to stop it from getting out?
Some kind of, some kind of berm of some sort, a stone, a stone dike. That is semi-circular, set some distance from the outlet that would act as an energy dissipator. Um, you wouldn't want boats to run over it, but um, clearly, you'd, you know, you you want, that would be a way that you could. Attempt to control the migration of sediment to stop it from going farther in the lake, because you don't know if there's gonna be times when you have low flow. I don't know if the lake goes down below the normal spillway of the dam.
It does almost.
Does. Yeah, so what's gonna happen is it's gonna continue to migrate out farther out into the lake, making it more difficult to capture.
Yes.
So if you have some kind of structure there that helps to contain it close to shore. So that when the lake goes down, it's still gonna get de-energized. The runoff water, when it does come, will get de-energized in that forbay. And hopefully, it's not gonna be velo- the velocities aren't gonna be so much that it'll drag the sediment up and take farther into the lake. That's all an engineering thing. You'd want an engineer to do that design work for you.
Yes, in the meantime, is there some way that we get permission to work and get that dirt that's out, so it's not migrating further?
What kind of machine would you be using?
I would assume uh that um, that a contractor would use a mini to midsize excavator where where applicable.
So I think the first thing that I would do is talk, have, I would suggest that you talk to a contractor, uh, one that you know has done good work in town.
Yes.
And ask them to give you some advice and then come back with a request for a ruling. Uh, whether or not it's conservation soil water with a diagram showing the location and the area that you're gonna excavate. The amount of accumulated material that you expect to remove and where you're gonna take that material to. And um, was, once we know where those locations are, um, if they can come through by the next meeting. You might still be able to get it done before, you know, that starts to rebound, but we would need to have a plan to work on that, you know, some kind of. Locus, location and extent of excavation. To know how far, and so you need to talk to a contractor first, and he can probably help you with that.
Yes, we have four reputable local people that we work with, and I've, yeah, I've touched base with them. I was just looking for what you folks were looking for. Thank you. I'm all done. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Thanks.
I have an item as well, if I if I could, even, I'm not a, I'm not a citizen, but I'm representing one.
Go ahead, Norm.
All right, um, I've uh, I've been speaking with Mr. Mike Grenier on three ninety-nine Roseland Park. I know that he's uh. Uh, he started doing some work, uh, came before the commission. He's looking from for some options to try and keep water away from his home. Um, we actually have a a plan that we did for um, the former owner, Eva Spalding. Uh, where we had the wetlands flagged up, and uh, we have the septic system, the house located and so forth. Um, it 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 appears that we do have um, some room to work. Uh, to perhaps construct a berm to keep the water away from his home. Uh, without actually disturbing any wetlands, uh, so, um. I guess I'm looking for a little direction. I I do have, I do have a PDF of that plan. If you would allow me to share my screen, I could kind of show you what we have and. And and I think sometimes graphically, it speaks a little louder than me trying to explain it. If uh, you know, if that's something that uh, that would be possible.
Can you screen share?
I can try, yep. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so um, this was actually a subdivision plan uh that we did for uh, Mrs. Spalding. And this is Mr. Grenier's home here. There's the home, the barn. And his existing septic system and 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 what happens right now when um. When uh muddy brook is really flowing, or if you get some, some excessive rains. The lower level of this house, this little appendage right over here. Um, the water really, it comes right up to the door. Um the water really, it comes right up to the door and aft- after that point, the 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 terrain rises up pretty quickly over here. So it doesn't impact any other uh spot in his house, but. What what seems to be happening is that the the septic system is at a certain elevation. And around both sides of it, you've got you've got a couple of low points along along the sides of the septic system here. When the water comes up. It just kind of makes its way around the septic system and then, you know, to his front door. So um I I think uh ha- having been out there and discussed it with him, it it appears that the. That the the solution would be to. Raise up uh the grade from uh around the septic system and sort of horseshoe it around. Uh the house a little bit till you get to the point where where that water won't impact. His uh his property or his or his building any longer. I mean, there is a door right there. Uh and the and the water, uh I haven't seen it, but he tells me that the water comes almost right up to the door of the house. Um so um I mean, my intention would be to come before the commission. Uh show the grading and where the berm would be uh to try and circumvent this water. Uh from kind of short circuiting and and getting to the house and have it continue on its way and 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 get back into uh into muddy brook. So I guess I would just kind of looking on to see what everyone's thoughts are on that and uh. If if that seemed like a a reasonable option.
It it would be a barely perceptible berm, wouldn't it, Norm? I mean, you're only gonna need what? Maybe a foot?
It doesn't. Yeah, it's not much. It's it's not. It's not much. It really is. You've just got these low points on. Septic system and the water, the water just goes around it and and gets up to his house right now.
Yeah, so if you just filled in those low spots.
Yeah, and then and then the water will continue on its way and and you know, go back where where it should go and and not up to his house.
Uh Bill Rowinsky, just for a little bit of history. I don't know if you heard this part of it, but he was originally intending to dig a. Essentially a pond is retaining pond and use the materials to make a berm. Um one of our main. So a few of our main objections is one is the retention pond probably wouldn't have helped.
No, no, definitely definitely would not have helped because. And you know, I know he did start excavating a little bit in 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 the upland kind of over here. And where he excavated and you know, and he said, well, no, then the water will go there and it'll keep it away from my house, but. It I was there on a extremely dry day and there was two feet of water in his uh. In his uh little, you know, detention area that he thought would take some relief away from the house. You know, I don't I don't think he quite understands. How much water a- actually gets there. Um it you know. Obviously, if you got muddy brook overflowing and and flooding and and a good portion of this area is uh is floodplain as well. So.
Yeah.
Uh so aside from potentially digging a hole in the wetlands, he was disrupting this floodplain. And I mean, it's not always a bad thing to provide more capacity in the floodplain, but um you know, as far as. Digging a hole and 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 putting a pipe in it and discharging back to muddy brook, I I I told him it. You know, what he wants to do, he said he'd put like a six-inch pipe and. I explained to him that there's no way that that would ever accommodate what you want to do here. It's it's just. You know, you you're you're using a straw in a in a five-hundred gallon tank, basically.
Yeah.
You know.
And and the other part of that discussion was that um he was basically looking to put a berm. All the way to Roseland Park Road and all the way back around that septic system, I believe, or at least around the house. And we had concerns whether that should get overtop, if there was a way to um you know. Release that overtopping um and talk might need some engineering to see how much of a berm it would need to. You know, stop water from going over, but still have some uh provisions for if water is in back of the berm.
Right.
On the house side.
Yeah, I mean, it 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 really is ba- it would be based upon. Uh the the finished floor elevation um of that lower level, so we would have to be. We would have to be above that finished floor elevation in in order for it to function properly. He did.
So Norm.
Yeah, go ahead, Marla.
Um one of the things that I would want to see on the drawing is where the FEMA floodplain is.
Mm-hmm.
Um in relation to the existing contours. Because the female floodplains frequently are not real accurate as to.
No, and 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 the floodplain over here, it's not. There's no flood study. It's not elevated. It's just it's just sort of broad brushed. In there.
Right. But I did get an inquiry uh from uh a resident. Um who has property upstream, who thought maybe with him filling, it would cause some adverse effect to them. And I said, no, it wouldn't. Wouldn't affect upstream. It would affect downstream because of loss of flood storage.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The other thought that I I had was that if he had like a. Some kind of uh structure that was near the door because he has a foundation there and the foundation does come up a bit. Um from the from the ground level. I don't know how high it goes up. But if he had like some kind of like a a step down with some kind of structure that you would have to step down, he could have it covered so that the rain didn't get into it. Um that would actually protect that door. Is there something? Um alternative in protecting that door from water coming in that would be. Would be less intrusive than than bringing a lot of fill. And by the way, advise your client to stop bringing fill in. He brought in up a load of fill near the street. Um in in the last month or so and has graded it off and that's in the upland review area and he's. Shouldn't be doing anything until he gets this straightened out.
Okay, I will. I will pass the word.
Advise him to stop doing grading work within a hundred feet of the wetlands delineation.
And and everything is within a hundred feet. Uh these are these are delineated wetlands, jolt the rope, flag them.
Yeah.
Um so, you know, they are, they are flagged up. Um they're accurate. Okay.
Because the alternative is if he doesn't stop, we'd end up taking having to take an enforcement action against him. And I don't think he really needs that at this point in time with his concerns.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Alright, well, I appreciate your input. And uh. And I know you want to get out and watch the football game, Marla, so.
You told on me.
Alright, hey, thank you. Have a nice night.
Alright, you're welcome.
Good night.
Yep, take care.
Oh, I guess we lost Mike Allen. I was I saw he was hanging in there for a while, but you know, he's gone, so. I was Phil, yeah, what do you got?
I was just gonna say that I just wanted to listen to the rest of the meeting to be a little more familiar with it and a little bit. Better prepared the next time and and no, I can't join the committee yet, but. But the fire department has a meeting every Monday night, so.
Okay.
At least the first Monday of the month, I I go to the the business meeting, but. But I'm definitely concerned about the wetlands and um it was very interesting, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody, for doing your work. The work of it, so we need it, so.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yep.
So I want to, Bill Rowinsky, I would just want to bring up one more item.
Uh yeah.
Our. The guy who dug the pond there or enlarged the pond at Bungee, um he lives on Marcy Road. Was a lake few drive that the water, there were some current concerns there. We haven't heard anything back from him yet. I forget I forget his name. I have to go look back.
So Dan would have to find that that file. There should be a file on him.
It's Jim Bentley.
Is his name? Yeah, yeah, I think so, yeah.
I'll locate the file and see where Ashley might have left off.
Yeah. Amy's very familiar with that, so. Okay. Alright, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Bill Bill Rowinsky, I move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Bill Rowinsky, seconded by Stuart Peaslee to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, so move. Amy, I have nine oh three PM.
I have eight fifty-eight.
Oh, we'll go with yours then, eight fifty-eight. We got done before nine.
That's when I have to.
Oh, okay.
So long, everyone.
Okay, goodnight.
Everybody.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Amy.